Good evening and welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Meeting, October 21st, 2024. The time is 6:00 P.M. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk.
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our minutes for October 7th, 2024 received, Commissioners. What say you? Minutes were stand as submitted. Consent agenda. A, resolution to increase loan limits for the wastewater and water and wi- sorry, excuse me. Resolution to increase loan limits for the water and wastewater service line program from fifteen thousand to three thirty thousand. B, resolution of intention to set rates for all customers of the City of Helena. Oh, did you want to do?
I can do that.
Okay. Resolution of intention to set rates for all customers of the City of Helena Water System. C, resolution of intention to set rates for all customers of the City of Helena Wastewater System. D, annual lease agreement with the Rocky Mountain Development Council for the neighborhood center property. Discussion, Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I would like to pull items B and C out of the consent agenda. Those are the rates for the water and wastewater systems. I think that having some of the information that we discussed at the last meeting would be helpful in having those discussions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would support doing that and having additional discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I guess when we get to that point of discussion, I might even go a step further and have us consider the idea of maybe tabling these two items just from the standpoint of our rate-setting process and public involvement, I guess. And I'll explain that when we get to that point.
Roger that.
Okay. Thank you.
So, consent agenda, we will do the Alpha and Delta.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve consent agenda items A and D.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion from the Commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Bid award. Consider bid award for ten-mile diversion structure replacement project number twenty-two dash zero-three. City Engineer Clark or Public Director Leland, you have the floor.
What do you think, Mayor and Commissioners? Is the agenda is to consider a bid award for ten-mile diversion structures, which are the raw water structures located on five or six creeks up there and ten-mile creek drainage that put the water into the pipeline that serves ten-mile water treatment plant? And the project is entirely funded with ARPA minimum allocation grant funding. We received five bids and five responsible bidders, and the bid in front of you is the base bid plus one alternate bid for the project, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Comments from you? Do we have any public comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I will move to award the base bid replacing all six diversion structures in a bid schedule A2 automating the Walker Creek diversion of the ten-mile diversion structures replacement project to the lowest responsible bidder, Montana Civil Contractors, in the amount of one million nine hundred and two thousand two hundred and twenty dollars.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Commissioners' proposals? Thank you. Reporter of the City Attorney?
Mayor, Commissioners, I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Reporter of the City Manager?
Mayor, Commissioners, I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Communications from Helena Citizens Council, HCC Representative Andrew.
Mayor, Commissioners, the only thing I have tonight is concerning the sixty-six comments taken at HCC's open house at the Civic Center September 25th in conjunction with the City of Helena's Helena Forward Land Use Plan, where we have prioritized and ranked these comments as perceived by participants according to the importance to our community. So at our monthly meeting this coming Wednesday, we're going to review these comments and possibly use them to set our strategic plan for 2025. So it was a good showing. I'm glad that some of you made an appearance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Comments or questions for Representative Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For Mr. Andrew, do you anticipate some sort of release of your results after your meeting on Wednesday so the public can see it or so we can see it? I'd be very interested.
I think that that'll be as we meet and entertain comments and dialogue, we'll give something to the City Commissioners and Mayor. Thank you very much.
Regular items. Consider a resolution establishing a cost reimbursement program for water and wastewater infrastructure installed by the City of Helena for Phase Two of the West Side Annexation City Project Number One-eight dash one-five. Director Leland, you have the floor.
Mayor, Commission, if you would indulge me, I'd like to do A and B together because we have Phase One and Phase Two for the water and wastewater. The presentation fits together and it was one project, but we had to break it out because of legal aspects that was involved with the whole project.
No problem there.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So I'd like to talk about Phase One and Two of the water and wastewater reimbursement for the West Side. This has been a pretty long process going through. We first annexed the City of Helena, Phase One, which is the yellow that you can see outlined there back in 2016, and then a few months or a few years later, we annexed Phase Two, which is the blue section over by Knight Street and Kessler School. So that is the Phase One and Phase Two when we break it out. The project was back in about 2019 is when it really started. It was an eight-point-three-million-dollar project, which of that, the city contributed three-point-seven million dollars, including the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of TSEP funding that went through the county and the city paying for engineering. Then breaking down what the breakdown, we've talked about this a lot, so I'm going to go fairly quickly, is through Phase One and Phase Two, it broke down to water service at seventy-seven cents per square foot of the lot, and then it's eighty-two cents per square foot of the lot for the sewer and then trench restoration. We had to break that out separate because it's hard to differentiate Phase One and or water and sewer with the trench because sometimes it's just one, sometimes it's two. So we broke out the trench restoration, which was also in the settlement agreement of seventy-five cents per square foot for Phase One. And then for Phase Two, it was a dollar for the water, a dollar nineteen for the sewer and trench restoration came in cheaper at fifty-eight cents. There was a lot of combined and set a separate water and sewer going through different ones. So Phase One, if you have a twelve-hundred-and, twelve-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot lot, you're looking at just under thirty-thousand dollars for both. If you are only connecting to water, then you will pay water plus trench restoration. If you're connecting to sewer, you only pay sewer plus the trench restoration. And then if you do water and sewer, you will pay for the water and sewer and only one trench restoration. That's just how it all came out. And then if you are in Phase Two and have the same twelve-thousand-five-hundred-foot lot, you are looking at thirty-two thousand, just over thirty-two thousand dollars. With that, the city and the resolutions that are that is in here for the reimbursement, if you have an existing lot in here, this is not new lot, so if you have existing house that has well and septic and are going to connect to the city, or if you have one or the other, you are going to be able to do, if you connect within the five years, the city will do a zero percent interest loan for the next twenty years, but have a five percent administration administrative costs for us to run the loans and process everything on there. After the five years, it's a one-time payment at the time of connection. Then the new construction, which was felt is with new construction, you just roll it into your construction loan, so you just pay that off at the time. You have to connect to both of them at the same time, but your well, if you do have one, can be used for irrigation. It has to be totally separated. That is contamination issue and a cross-connection issue with the state, so you can't use that as the domestic because we need to have control of the type of the water and quality that is going to your home. So with that, I'd answer any questions because I know we've gone through this several times in administrative meetings, so see where you'd like to go for questions.
Thank you, Director Leland. Commissioners, comments or questions? Do we have any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner.
I move to approve the resolution establishing a cost reimbursement program for water and wastewater infrastructure installed by the City of Helena for Phase Two of the West Side Annexation Project, City Project Number Eighteen dash fifteen.
We'll go with both?
Wait, I think we have to do motions separately.
Okay.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion from the Commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Okay. Commissioner?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'm moved to approve the resolution establishing a cost reimbursement program for the water and wastewater infrastructure installed by the City of Helena for Phase One of the West Side Annexation City Project Number Eighteen dash fifteen.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion from the Commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Mayor, I think before we get to public hearings, we should probably dispose of the two prior items that were skipped over in the consent agenda. Commissioner? I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Logan, don't forget you have.
Mr. Mayor, I guess, Director Leland, can you maybe talk about how, essentially how we would do a normal presentation for this item if it hadn't been on the consent agenda? You provided some helpful information that was a follow-up to some questions from the last administrative meeting regarding the context of the water and wastewater rate requests. But I don't know if it'd be.
Mayor, Mayor Commissioners, I will get started. I put the presentation on late, so Danae is pulling it up, so thank you and sorry about that. But to go over it real quick, for the water and wastewater, we are looking at a three-point-five percent increase for the water and a four percent increase for the wastewater. This is the resolution of intention, which we will, this is the highest level that we can go to, but at this time, we will advertise it and then get public comment after we get the intention of what you would like to go for. So that's kind of the public comment, and we are following the 2022 rate study that was done by FCS, a private consulting, that went through everything and has been presented. So we're following them, and they recommend a three-point-five percent and a four percent correspondingly.
What is that in dollars and cents?
In dollars and cents, I will go through that. Is there, is that, it varies on what the unit is going to be, but you can look here just going through here. These are increases this year from the seven major cities, Missoula and Butte. I was unable to find any information. I will get that information, but I don't have it, but you're looking at fifteen percent, twelve percent for Kalispell, Great Falls. You're seeing everything that goes there, and then a little less except for Bell Grade, which they have some upgrades that they need to do because of the development that is out there. So they're twenty-five percent, but we are considerably low. Kalispell's the only one close to us with a four percent for wastewater. You can look here, this is the dollars and cents that you can come in, looking at six-thousand gallons, which is six units. Going through their of use, the water comparatively, we are second to last, Great Falls only being lower. And so you're going to see if you only have this much consumption, the more consumption you use, of course, the higher you're going to see because of our tiered system that we have out there, but you're going to look at about a dollar increase for water. And then for wastewater, you're looking at a little over two dollars. If you use the eleven units, you're going to see about three-point-eight, which is the average for the City of Helena. But these came off of an A2S study that was done, so they use six thousand instead of six units instead of the eleven units, so that's why we went there. But on the advertisement that's going to go out, you're going to see about three-point-eight dollars per month on the average resident that is out there. So you can see we are considerably one of the lower ones for the City of Helena or for the state of Montana. And then you can look at some of the increases that were out there over the past year, two years, depending on when it really came in. Pipe material for, we're getting hydrants and valves and sewer manholes. You're seeing anywhere from fifteen to twenty percent increase. Lab tests where we have to go out to get our water tested, it's DEQ requirements, you're seeing twenty, thirty percent increases on there. Repair to equipment, we are getting to a point where some of our treatment plants, especially the wastewater treatment plant, the equipment's getting to the end of its life, so we're seeing more repairs or we have to replace them. We're seeing twenty-five percent chemicals. This is very low chlorine, you're seeing up over a hundred percent increase, but we're seeing forty-five percent utility costs. We're seeing forty-five percent computer software and equipment. We need to start upgrading some of our equipment, especially with SCADA, so we can control everything. We're seeing forty-one percent capital projects, as you've seen trying to award like the solar and that, we're seeing substantial increases of around fifteen to twenty. And then with our studies, this is only over the last year, you're seeing about a fifteen percent increase. So I could go on and on. If we go back a few years, you can see that we could get up to hundreds of percent increases if we go back like three years.
Please. And Mayor, the, just for the record, the question before the Commission tonight is to consider passing a resolution calling for a public hearing thirty days from now. So no decisions other than calling for a public hearing before the Commission this evening. And I think traditionally, it's always been in the fall when the city has considered water and wastewater rates. Is that correct, Director?
Mayor, yes, it is, City Managers. We do it after the irrigation system, so you don't see a big increase to the bills during irrigation. They have some time to get used to it and see what it's going to be for irrigation. There was a horror story in billings just this past year, if you read any of the papers, so we try to avoid that. And so with this, if this is approved to go forward, we will send out utility bills that say what it's going to be, the increase of basically ten dollars and thirteen cents, ten dollars and fifteen cents for base rate. That'll go out with the three dollars and eighty-two cent average increase is what it's going to be. Plus, we are going to advertise three times into the paper, so that is how we're going out as far as public input. So that's traditionally how we've handled it.
Mr. Mayor, relative to my comments a few moments ago, please scratch that.
Okay.
Didn't have my head screwed on entirely correctly. Understanding this is a resolution of intention and we do have the hearing thirty days hence or whenever our next meeting is, so my apologies for that. I'm comfortable supporting this tonight. It seems like, when I went back and did a little research on this, and Director Leland may correct me here, but it seemed like the water rates, gosh, I think were actually set in 2019. The last, we had a bi- we were, we had a biennial approach to budgeting at that time. It was before my time, but I think the last increase to the water was set at that time, which it actually did increase in FY '21, but the increases, I guess my point is, have been modest and am certainly comfortable supporting both the increases to water and wastewater. So apologies for my previous comments, and we'll move on.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that presentation from Dr. Leland, and I'm happy to make a motion.
Please.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution of intention to set residential and commercial water base and usage rates and set a public hearing date for November 18th, 2024.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Okay. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
I said my date right. Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
You just said my date. When you public comment, is that date? All right. Public hearings.
Yeah, I think we have the wastewater.
Yeah, you did set.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead. Commissioner?
City Attorney.
No, but.
Just, I thought I heard Commissioner Dean say both water and wastewater. Is that sufficient or does it need to be separate?
Mayor, Commissioners.
Let's spare on this side of caution. Commissioner Dean, let's go ahead.
Thank you.
Yep, I think I did just do residential and commercial water base and usage. So the second motion is I will move to approve a resolution of intention to set residential and commercial wastewater base and usage rates and set a public hearing date for November 18th, 2024.
Second.
Second. So move and seconded. Any finer comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe we took public comment on those items.
Okay, to set the dates?
Would you like to take public comment?
Are there any public comments on this item? That is setting the dates for hearing on November 18th? Is that what you said? Okay. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any online?
There are no public comments online.
Let's go.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Public hearings. Consider an ordinance amending City of Helena Ordinance Number Three-zero-nine-seven and the official zoning map for the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from R2 Residential to Public Land and Institutions, PLI, for the property on Carroll College Campus.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight I present to you a zone change at thirteen-twenty-nine North Benton Avenue.
Is that microphone on?
It is. Or it's lit up.
Okay. Lit up red or green?
Green. This is consideration of an ordinance amending City of Helena Ordinance Number Three-zero-nine-seven and the official zoning map for the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from R2 Residential to Public Lands and Institutions for the property legally described as the north nine feet in the east seventy feet of Lot Fifteen in Block One of the Capitol Hill addition to the City of Helena, and the east seventy feet in the south ten feet of Lot Thirteen, in the east seventy feet of Lot Fourteen in Block One of the Capitol Hill addition to the City of Helena, and the east ten feet in the west fifty feet of the south ten feet of Lot Thirteen, in the east ten feet of the west fifty feet of Lot Fourteen in Block One of the Capitol Hill addition to the City of Helena, and Lot Sixteen in the west fifty feet of the north nine feet in the south forty-one feet of Lot Fifteen in Block One of the Capitol Hill addition to the City of Helena, and Lot One A of Block One of the Capitol Hill addition to the City of Helena in Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as described in Certificate of Survey Three-three-zero-zero-seven-seven-two. This property is generally located on the northeast side of the intersection at Benton Euclid in Lyndale and is currently zoned R2. The applicant is seeking a zone change to PLI. This will unify the zoning throughout the Carroll College Campus, and the applicant states this will allow them to maximize their future development potential. The top two photos are showing the site as it currently is. It is the open field along North Benton. The bottom show the surrounding areas. It's B2 commercial zoning to the south of Euclid in Lyndale, and it's R3 zoning across The R2 residential districts provide for residential dwellings and limited non-residential development. The PLI districts provide and apply to public and quasi-public institutional uses, and our 2019 growth policy designates this as mixed use, places where people can work, live, play, and learn. These are for a variety of complementary uses, including residential, office, light manufacturing, entertainment, and public uses. Montana Code seventy-six-two-three-zero-four gives the criterias for zoning regulations. Zoning regulations must be made in accordance with the growth policy and designed to secure safety from fire and other dangers, promote public health, public safety, and the general welfare, and facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks, and other public requirements. In adopting zoning regulations, the governing body shall consider reasonable provision of adequate light and air, the effect on motorized and non-motorized transportation, the promotion of compatible urban growth, the character of the district and its suitability for particular uses, and conserving the value of buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land. As stated, the 2019 growth policy designates this as mixed use. The PLI zoning aligns with the current uses in the vicinity and with the growth policy. This will create consistency with the adjacent properties throughout the Carroll College Campus. It is not expected to create any new detrimental impacts because of its compatibility. to create any new detrimental impacts because of its compatibility with the existing PLI. The subject property is served by all City of Helena services, and a traffic engineer or traffic analysis was generated by E5 Engineering. They estimated about sixty-six average weekday trips would be added with this zone change. This is less than the requirement for a full traffic impact study. On department reviews, Fire Department stated they approved this zone change. Any construction will be evaluated against the International Fire Code. Transportation, Utility, Legal and Engineering provided no comment, and the police did not provide a response. This aligns with our growth policy goals and objectives, specifically goals one in ten to promote and sustain Helena's economic vitality, and to plan for and establish types and quantities of land uses in Helena supporting community needs. And it aligns with objective seventy-six, seventy-seven, eighty, and eighty-six. Supporting land use patterns that promote compatible, well-designed development and implement related master plans, indoor facility plans, apply zoning designations with careful consideration, including the future land use, compatibility with surrounding land, infrastructure, and development of vacant and underutilized buildings, along with promoting development of varieties of compatible types of mixed-use neighborhood centers throughout the city. In reviewing this, this will adhere to the goals and objectives, and it will not create any new impacts to health, safety, or welfare. The zoning commission meeting was legally noticed in the independent record on July twenty-seventh. Neighbor notices and notice sign were placed at that time. On the August thirteenth zoning commission meeting, the motion to recommend approval passed on a three to zero vote. First passage was through this body on September twenty-third. This meeting was legally noticed in the independent record on the fifth, with new neighbor notices and a new notice sign sent out and placed at that time. As of today, we have received no public comment on this item. With that, it is the city's recommendation for approval of an ordinance amending the City of Helena ordinance three zero nine seven and the official zoning map for the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from R2 residential to public lands and institutions, PLI, for the property legally described earlier in this presentation. Thank you for your time this evening, and are there any questions for city staff at this time?
Commissioners? Do we have any public comments on this topic?
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. I move to approve an ordinance amending the City of Helena ordinance number three zero nine seven and the official zoning map for the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from R2 residential to public lands and institutions for the property legally described as the north nine feet of east seventy feet of Lot fifteen in block one of the Capitol Hill addition to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, and the east seventy feet of the south ten feet of Lot thirteen, and east seventy feet of Lot fourteen in block one of the Capitol Hill addition to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, and the east ten feet of west fifty feet of south ten feet of Lot thirteen, and east ten of the west fifty feet of Lot fourteen in block one of Capitol Hill addition to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, and Lot sixteen, and the west fifty feet of north nine feet and south forty-one feet of Lot fifteen in block one of the Capitol Hill addition to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, and Lot one A of block one of Capitol Hill addition to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as described as COS three three zero zero seven seven two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Just to repeat, some I think Commissioner Dean said at the last meeting, this new designation would allow Carroll to build dorms on that site, correct?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Yes, Commissioner Reed, this would allow them to build dorms or any other campus-related buildings on that site?
Thank you. That's all.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
All right. Consider quit claiming the city's interest in south thirteen feet of Lot twenty in block one of the original town site of the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, property to Joseph Horella and David Brown, or South Park Avenue Condominiums LLC. Attorney Doctor Ian or Attorney Pettich, is that the right pronunciation?
Uh, Pettish.
Pettish, oh, come on, I was close. Okay, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Matthew Pettish from the City Attorney's Office, and I'm asking, I'm here to ask you to consider quit claiming the city's interest in the south thirteen feet of Lot twenty in block one of the original town site of the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, to South Park Avenue Condominiums LLC. This property is located next to Lot twenty, or this thirteen-foot strip of property owned by the city is adjacent to Lot twenty and block one of the original town site of Helena. And Mr. Joseph Horella and David Brown, they were attempting to do a boundary line relocation that included Lot twenty, and during that process, they discovered that this thirteen feet is owned by the city. And so they approached the city and asked if the city would consider selling it to them. We did some research and discovered that Mr. Horella and Mr. Brown purchased Lot twenty in nineteen ninety, and they have been paying taxes on Lot twenty and the thirteen feet for the entirety of that time. So we're talking over thirty years. And so, Mr. Brown and Mr. Horella, they're looking to develop this property, Lot twenty, as well as some others in the area. This is, and to give you a little bit more perspective, it's Lot twenty and this thirteen feet are located around the hair, hair area of North Park Avenue, just down the street from us here. And Mr. Brown and Mr. Horella are members of South Park Avenue Condominiums LLC, and South Park Condom, South Park Avenue Condominiums LLC now owns Lot twenty. And so, we spoke, my office spoke to city staff and asked them if they had any concerns about the city quit claiming this thirteen feet. The city had, directors had no, no concerns whatsoever. There was no present use of the, of the property. It's barren. It's almost like a, it's more or less kind of like an alley, but it was never platted as such. It's just, so it's just real property, not right-of-way, if that makes sense. And city staff had no foreseeable use for that property. And so, we are recommending today that the city quit claim this property, the south thirteen feet of Lot twenty in block one of the original town site of the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, to South Park Avenue Condominiums LLC. If you have any questions for Mr. Brown, who is a member of South Park Avenue Condominiums, he is present today, and I am also available for questions.
Commissioners? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I will move to quit claim the city's interest in the south thirteen feet of Lot twenty in block one of the original town site of the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, to South Park Avenue Condominiums LLC.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider final passage of an ordinance amending City of Helena ordinance number three zero nine seven and official zoning map for the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from R2 residential to R3 residential for the property legally described as Lot eighteen dash twenty in block twenty-nine of the Corbin subdivision in the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana. Planner Alvarez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. This is, as introduced, Michael Alvarez, planner with the City of Helena Community Development Department. My item tonight is one oh two South Cook Street, a zone change from R2 to R3, specifically consideration of an ordinance amending City of Helena ordinance three zero nine seven and the official zoning map for the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from R2 residential to R3 residential for the property legally described as lots eighteen to twenty in block twenty-nine of the Corbin subdivision to the City of Helena. The application for zone change in your packets indicates that there is an associated land use case. The associated land use case was a conditional use permit for professional office use on the property, and that application has been withdrawn. The property is generally located on the southwest side of the intersection of East Broadway Street and South Cook Streets. There's an aerial photograph up there. It's the property highlighted in red. The current zoning designation is R2 residential, with the applicant seeking that zone change to R3 residential. The R3 zoning is not out of alignment with the zoning of the area. This is a predominantly residential-zoned area, including R3 property adjacent. R3 zoning would allow for limited commercial activity on the site with a conditional use permit being approved, which would again need to appear before this body. The plat map is up on your screen. The R2 residential districts provide for residential dwellings and limited non-residential development that protects and enhances the residential nature of the area, whereas the R3 residential district provides for the development of a mixture of residential structures to serve varied housing needs and allows limited compatible non-residential uses. The public designation from the growth policy is, and the future land use map, is land that is in government or quasi-government use. So in the first time this was brought before the body, there was some conversations about the maps and the future land use map. So that's what that blurb is up on your screen there. The, the map area in blue is the area designated as public on the future land use map with the property in question with the red box around it there. So you can see that entire side of the street, and I'm sorry, they are on there, the street names, they're just not coming through as well as I thought they would. But that's East Broadway there, going from left to right, just on the north side of the red box and those blocks there. So it's, it's all of those blocks from Lamborn to North Montana are designated on the future land use map for the expansion of the public lands. And, here we go. So, Montana Code annotated seventy-six two three oh four sets the criteria and guidelines for zoning regulations. Zoning regulations must be, A, made in accordance with the growth policy, and B, designed to secure safety from fire and other dangers, promote the public health, public safety, and the general welfare, and facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewer, sewage, schools, parks, and other public requirements. In the adoption of zoning regulations, the municipal governing body shall consider reasonable provision of adequate light and air, the effect on motorized and non-motorized transportation systems, promotion of compatible urban growth, the character of the district, and its peculiar suitability for particular uses, and conserving the value of buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout the jurisdictional area. The 2019 City of Helena growth policy designated that area as public, the area that is in government or quasi-government use. The R2 zoning district restricts the types of uses typically found in public areas primarily by limiting commercial and recreational activities within the district. R2 zoning districts prohibit applicable commercial use outside of community gardens and through the CUP process, cultural facilities, and, and through the CUP process, cultural facilities and worship facilities. The zone type otherwise prohibits almost all applicable uses from the public designation. The proposed R3 zoning district similarly restricts the types of uses typically found in public areas. However, through the CUP process, it does allow for professional offices, which is the prevailing use type in the adjacent public lands and institutions zoning district that covers the Capitol campus to the north of one oh two South Cook Street. So comparing the land use tables of the R2 and R3 zoning districts with the property's future land use designation, we find that while neither zoning district is an ideal match, R3 allows for the predominant use type of the state capitol's campus with approval of a conditional use permit, and is therefore a better match to the future land use map than R2. While no development is associated with this zone change application at this time, a roughly quarter-acre property zoned as R3 could increase the number of trips generated by the property per day. However, the expected amount is far below the two hundred trips per day requirement, requirement to provide a traffic impact study, and any likely build of that property wouldn't require any areas to the, require any changes to the area's street network. Of course, if it did come back for a conditional use permit in the future, it would be required to put in sidewalks along Cook Street. The subject property is served by all City of Helena Emergency Service and Utilities, and that is quarter-acre. Numbers for trip generation are up on your screen for possible different build types. Currently, a single-family home would be at nine point five two trips per day. The largest expected build-out that we would typically see on a that-size property in an R3, if somebody were to, you know, tear that down and build like a fourplex or something, would up it to about forty trips per day. Again, there is no current plan associated with this zone change, however. Transportation, Transportation Systems gave a comment that this doesn't look like it would substantially change existing traffic patterns. Generally, there was no comments left. At the time of these comments, there wasn't associated CUP, and there had been some comments for the CUP, but like I said before, that has been withdrawn. This is in line with growth policy objectives, specifically goal ten, to plan for and establish types and quantities of land uses in Helena, supporting community needs, neighborhood centers, aesthetics, and the city's long-term sustainability. And it does that through objective seventy-seven, objective eighty-two, and objective ninety-nine, which is to apply or revise zoning designations with careful consideration of factors, including the future land use map, compatibility with surrounding land uses, infrastructure and service plans, development of vacant and underutilized buildings, existing future traffic patterns, goals and objectives of the growth policy. Objective eighty-two, which is to encourage development patterns and proposals that promote efficient use of city infrastructure and resources. Objective ninety-nine, promote the concentration of specialized industries within the city where specialized infrastructure, information, and labor advantages may promote economic development and desirable growth. The proposed zone change to R3 will increase consistency with adjacent properties and increase development opportunities unique to the area, being located close to the capital. And the proposed zoning is not expected to create detrimental impacts to the surrounding properties, as this zone type already exists adjacent to this property and affords for similar uses found in the vicinity. Legally required notice for the city commission meeting was legally noticed in the Helena Independent Record on July twenty-seventh. Additional notice was provided by the Community Development Department. Neighbor notices were sent to property owners within a hundred fifty feet on seven one twenty-four. Neighbor notices were sent again... Neighbor notices were sent again with new dates on September 5, 24. New legal ad was run on, and sorry, that should, this should be up in the legally required notice section. New legal ad was run on September 17 for this date, and a notice sign was placed on Cook Street to the southwest of the intersection of East Broadway and South Cook Streets on June 24. And I still have the three written comments and oppositions that were received on July 9 for consistency with the zoning commission presentation. City staff recommends approval, and as did zoning commission at that date I just mentioned at their hearing, recommends approval of an ordinance amending City of Helena ordinance number 3097 and the official zoning map for the city of Helena that changes the zoning district from R2 residential to R3 residential for the property legally described as lots 18 to 20 in block 29 of the Corbin subdivision to the city of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana. And I will happily take your questions. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Thank you, Planner Alvarez. Commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question for you, Mr. Alvarez. So you had the map that had the blue public land designation. Yes. So in listening to what you're saying in the following slide, you sort of broke down what the restrictions are. If I'm understanding correctly, if you are an R2 in the public land, it's the R2 or the R3 that is the sort of, that is the relevant designation. Your, the residential is what matters, not the public land. Is that accurate?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. So the public designation on the future land use map is distinct from the zone type, public lands and institution. All of the Capitol complex is zone PLI. This, the applicant was applying for a change to R3. And so it's a comparison of R2 to the public land, to the public designation on the future land use map versus R3 compared to the future land use map designation.
But fundamentally, they're both still R2 and R3 within the context of the public designation. It's not like their designation becomes different because they are in the public sphere, correct?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Yes, yes. The only applicable laws for development around that, for zoning, is going to be R2 or R3. It won't be the the public designation.
Do we have any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
On the same slide, so you refer to that as a future land use map. And when, I'm looking at the county's map, site, zoning map site, and currently that area in blue on the south side of Broadway is shown as R2. So tell me a little bit about the difference between a future land use map in a growth policy and the existing zoning, and what the thought process is behind this, I guess, what is a proposed change to the existing zoning. If that makes, I hope that makes sense, the question.
That does. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. So the future land use map is in large part to guide how we determine. So it's in the growth policy, and it's created with the intent of being an expression of the direction that the city sees a neighborhood or an area developing, development patterns, pressures, which way it's going to go. Its time to shine is really here in a, in the matter of a zone change, where when we have to evaluate against the growth policy, this is the important aspect where we, we need to look at this map in order to tell which direction the neighborhood is supposed to go, and as based by, through the public process of the growth policy. So the idea here is, this is not our zoning map, but this influence it, influences it as the market brings us forward, zone changes that, and we can evaluate whether or not that's in line with the trends and desires that we saw through the growth policy development process.
A follow-up, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Thank you. So essentially, the authors and those that input into the growth policy at the time it was created saw this as a future use for these six blocks, or whatever it happens to be, south of Broadway.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Yes, Commissioner Logan. The authors of the, the growth policy at the time felt that that was the trend. It saw the pressure from the Capitol complex and development pressure in the area for the, the need for more offices and office space adjacent specifically to, to the Capitol. We do take, just in my time here, I'd say a couple of applications a year. Generally, they don't make it in front of you for CUPs or, or things like that. It can be difficult to actually move forward with the R2 zoning around there. And the public opposition, which I'm sure you'll hear from tonight, is, is frequent.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez, and Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Do we have any other comments from the, yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Planner Alvarez, on page, on slide nine of your presentation, you had the R3 map, R2 map. Can you, just give me a second.
Mayor and Commissioner, I'm not sure I have the map you're asking for in this presentation.
It's page nine on here, or page 212 on our agenda. Anyways, it's.
It's in your, sorry, it's in your packets, but not in, on my slides.
Oh, sorry about that. Yeah, so in that, in that map, it shows the, the two properties, or the two lots to the west of the applicant's lot are both R3.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
And so that, that, that leaves it open to development for, changing it to an R3 allows it for duplexes, correct?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Actually, in R2, they could have duplexes as well. It opens it up for multifamily, so, and typically, you'd see a change for R3 more to allow something like a fourplex, as opposed to then taking the extra step of going through a CUP for office space.
Sure. One follow-up, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Can you speak to Mr. Alvarez with the R3 for the definition of limited commercial activity? Can you speak to that a little bit?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Yes, so limited commercial activity is generally, the way we would view it in, in the department is, commercial activity that can follow neighborhood forms and scales, so not buildings that are too massive, not major traffic drivers, something that can handle traffic patterns in the general footprint of a building that's in the scale of the neighborhood. So large-scale retail or heavy drivers of traffic would be inappropriate for R3, but something small in scale that generates maybe only a couple of visitors a day or just has employees showing up, and the building is still of that similar form to, or total overall scale to the other homes in the neighborhood would be appropriate. So, you know, a psychiatry office versus a pizza parlor.
Sure, thank you.
Do we have any other comments from the commission? Are there any public comments on this topic?
Hello, Mayor, Commissioner, and Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Sondah Gob, and I represent House District, not House District, boy, I'm having a hard time right now, HHC District 2. And at our home, at our, at our open house, this, this came apart, it came to our attention, and we're not able to do it as a councilman. So we decided as a district, because that's where we live, that we would address it. And this, this piece of property is very interesting, because if you drove by it, you'll be driving east on Broadway, and you will notice when you get, when you cross Montana, you will see those two. There's a medical building that has its own parking lot. There's a little residential building just offset, and it has its own parking lot, but they do not access Broadway. There is no parking on Broadway. And so when you come on to Cook, there's a pretty good, you know, about six-foot drop from the property down to Broadway. So there's no parking on Broadway. So when you take a right, there's a nice ranch house that has a very good view of the Capitol. It doesn't look on the Capitol, it looks on, looks east. So it's a very nice piece of grass. The problem with this subdivision, it has no sidewalks. If you walk in this subdivision, you have to walk on the street. So also on this block, there's only four houses, two houses on the west side and two houses on the east side. They're very big lots. It's a very small street. The subdivision is old, the 60s, it was the age of the automobile, so, you know, you're not walking, you're not biking. That was the thought of these houses. So it does, it, it's a kind of a gray area, but I think it, this specific property has no potential with an R3. The, the alleyway is a dead end, it doesn't go through. So there's a lot of access points, it's just an odd property. So converting to an R3 is kind of sketchy, but those are my thoughts from Sondah Gob.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there any, we can make the alarm a little louder.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Jim Benish. I spoke prior to this meeting, and what I'm concerned about is exactly what she was discussing. There are no sidewalks. As a former school psychologist, we used to have kids walking, and we still have kids now, walking by our house on the street. If that became an R3, which originally was the discussion to have for lobbying, it took forever for those of us on Cook Street to make, turn that into a parking permit-only street. It's the only one in the area, because lobbyists and legislators parked in that street. So then when this particular building becomes an R3, then people can park there again without a permit. And we spent years getting you folks, before you were commissioners, to okay that this would be the one street that would require permit parking. And now that's maybe not so. My other concern is, as an R2 person, if you all own an R2, would you like to have an R3 moved right next door to you? If you had lobbyists, if you didn't have proper ADA. I used to work in the area of ADA, that house could not be turned into that. So the people that are going to go there, like the lobbyists, tavern owners was the original idea, would park their cars without permits and block where we park. So I'm really concerned about it remaining an R2. It should be an art, I mean, an R3, it should remain as an R2 and not be changed. As you know, around the country, housing has become more expensive. So we're going to take a house that somebody could move into and move it into an R3 and, again, reduce the possible housing that somebody else would have. So I'm opposed to R3. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comments?
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is John Iverson, and myself and my wife are the owner of this house. We've put in this application for the zoning change. And I think what I'd like to point out is, all around us, there's three different zoning districts. To the north is PLI, right across our fence line, not even across the street, but our fence line actually changes from R2 to R3. And so I had originally planned to file a CUP and operate a lobbying office there. However, as the other gentleman is absolutely correct, the costs associated with bringing that house up to the standards required to do that were just prohibitive. So we don't plan to do that. We had already started this process of changing this zoning. It complies with the growth plan, and so we thought, why not continue to move forward with this zoning? It matches the neighbor's zoning. It points the property in the direction that the future growth plan has suggested that it should be pointed. But, you know, the house has a total of six off-street parking spots. It has a three-car driveway and a three-car garage. We have no intention, and it's current, it's current use, which is a residential rental, that tenant is, hasn't, I don't believe has applied for an on-street parking spot because he's fully taken care of on the existing off-street parking. So, you know, I'd like to assure you that, you know, I plan to be a good neighbor. As a landlord, I plan to be, you know, treat my neighbors with respect and kindness, and I, I don't think they're going to see the types of impacts that they're concerned that they might see with this small zoning change. So I ask that you support it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any others?
Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Kathleen Hammel, and I live on.
Bring the microphone down, please, ma'am. Thank you.
My name is Kathleen Hammel, and I live on Highland Street, across the alley and then across the street from the residence in question. And my main concern is, Mr. Iverson said he has no plans to commercialize the building, but he changed his mind once. With all respect, it could happen again, or he could sell it, and someone else can knock the house down and put up a commercial building. I'm really concerned about maintaining the integrity of the neighborhood as residential. There's a school, Jefferson School, is two blocks away. The kids at Jefferson are told not to, if you're going east, that you have to go up and come east on Highland. There was sidewalks put in last spring. It's just not a safe area, as they said, after it gets to Cook Street, there's no more sidewalks. Kids on bikes, kids walking, kids on skateboards, it really is dangerous. Parking is an issue if there's anything going on at the Capitol. Our neighborhood is just inundated with cars, which, quite honestly, if you live in an area like that, you're very vulnerable to that kind of thing, and we're well aware of that. And, you know, for when things get busy, of course, the street gets busy, and there's that much more traffic, and, you know, these kids are in jeopardy, and it's really scary. Parking is an issue, and it would be more so if that should end up being a business. Neighbors in that area have lived there for a long time. We've been there for over 40 years. Benishes have been. The Lantons have been there for 70 years. We, we want our neighborhood. We, we want our neighborhood integrity maintained. Please consider not changing it to R3. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any other public comments?
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Greg Holtzman, and I live in this area also. To be honest with you, when I first heard about this, this wasn't a major issue to me, but it was a major issue to my wife and to my neighbors. So I came and, in support of them. But as I listen more and more, and if I miss a stake in anything, I, I do hope somebody can correct me. But it seems, I'm very concerned about the notice that's going out to different people. We talk about the growth issue, and I think that's a fair discussion to have, but that should be discussed with all those people in that blue area, and that will happen at a later date, instead of be doing this one by one. This gentleman, Mr. Alvarez, bought this house when it wasn't R2. He knew what he was buying. He was going to change it, and that, that's fair. A lot of people do try and do that. He then changed his mind and decided that he wanted to keep it. He wanted not to do it because of all the extra costs, but he still wants to change that one, two, and R3. And I think that discussion, if we're changing that area, instead of doing it one house by one house across there, it should be done with the whole group. And the only people that have been notified, as I mentioned last time, were the people within 150 feet. Our house is one over. We didn't even get the message. And all those people who got the messages are here. So I really wonder what would happen if you gave the rest of the people along Broadway and the upper street, who would all be here? And I think that's a fair discussion with everybody here, before we make a decision on a one person's desire to change something that he bought in one, as an R2. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any other?
Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Maury Hammel. I live at 1308 Highland Street. We have been there for 43, going on 44 years. We bought our home on purpose, because of the zoning, because of the established family neighborhood. We have three daughters that grew up there. It's safe. It always has been. Changing any of the zoning, when Zone 2, R2, is to protect and enhance the residential area, that's what we bought into. That's what everybody here that's spoken in favor of this being defeated has bought into. Again, so far, we've heard one person in favor of it, and many, many against. So please, deny the request to R2 to R3. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any others?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Ben Kiper. I am a District Two representative of the HCC. And just to reiterate, my comments don't reflect the entire opinions of the HCC. So this property is within District Two, so I've been following the public discussions and the meetings regarding this. And I tend to agree with the residents that live around this property, that we need to preserve the residential nature of this area. I tend to disagree with the public growth policy for this area. Six residential blocks being turned into government use, I think, is not wise, considering how much the Helena market has blown up recently. I know that that policy was established prior to the pandemic, so maybe we need to take another look at that. But just for now, I would suggest a no vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others in the chamber? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Please, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question would be for Planner Alvarez, and I think it is a little bit what I was trying to get at with my previous question. The, the blocks that are listed as public, the six residential blocks, the gentleman just before said turned into government use. My understanding is that nothing changes, because it's in the public designation, but it is a consideration if a zone change is requested. Is that accurate? Is there anything proactive about being blue on that map?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. There's nothing proactive about being designated public on that map. It is more an acknowledgement of the, the trends and development pressures on, on that neighborhood.
Mr. Mayor. Planner Alvarez, don't go too far. So, and I don't know if we can pull up the slide again. These zone changes, I think, are always difficult for me, because we, you know, I empathize when there is, there are neighbors who disagree with the request for this change. I know I, like, I, there's a house next to me that has turned over three times in the last three years by being purchased by different property management companies outside of Helena. So I, I totally understand when you want your neighborhood to continue to grow in a particular way, but if I'm not going to buy the property, it's difficult for me to determine what its outcome is. The reason that these items are always really hard for me is that I, personally, we can feel one way, but as Commissioners, we're required to make decisions in accordance with Montana Code at annotated. And so I was wondering if you could pull up the language that MCA requires us to make these decisions on? And can you maybe talk a little bit about how we're required to evaluate these kind of decisions based on MCA's framework?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. So the regulations that you see up on the screen before you set the format for the staff report that you have in your packets. So each of these items are, are addressed in a blurb, and we address them in as much of a consistent matter, from one zone change to the next, as, as is appropriate, from different properties in different places. So reasonable provision of adequate light and air, for instance, is accomplished through the setbacks that we have from R2 to R3, especially when you already have a built structure on the property. We wouldn't expect to see any difference there. Effect on motorized and non-motorized transportation systems, we deal with when we are talking about how the property is accessed and the total trip generation, and we have expected metrics for each zone type based, typically, they're based on a five-acre size. That breaks down and doesn't quite work when we're just dealing with a quarter-acre property, which is why this comparison was based on too frequent and conceivable ways to develop that property. Promotion of compatible urban growth. We turn back to the growth policy for this, which asks us to allow for zone types that... There's that great line in there about the peculiar suitability. It's actually D. But our, on the next one, I just like the word peculiar in here for, for state law. But it's, the idea here is that we should be locating businesses close to other businesses that, that are mutually beneficial. It cuts down on traffic. It cuts down on, on travel time. It promotes people walking. If this, for instance, were the lobbyist office, which, again, it's not a good property for other reasons than zoning, to not be a, a professional office, but they would likely park their car, leave it parked there, and crawl, and just walk across the street. So that would be one car that would normally drive to the, to the Capitol, parked off-street at this house or something, and then, and then walking across the street. And as for conserving the value of buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout the jurisdictional area, planners view this, I would say, frequently in conflict with the way that neighbors often feel about this. Study after study finds that land values go up, and that forces the, or not forces, but that lends itself to density and building more units in an area that has been valuable. It's not the other way around, where building more units drives up land value. So upzoning an area does not hurt land values. You just can't find a study where that happens.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner.
Thank you. So can I ask a question of the applicant?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner?
Mr. Iverson, thank you. So I don't know if this is a fair question or not, but we'll find out. So if you have no particular change in mind, what, what's your thought process in changing from R2 to R3?
I'd already started the process. I paid the non-refundable fee. And after the staff report came out, and it said that this is a, an appropriate direction for this property ahead, I felt as though it made sense just to proceed. But yeah, I plan to make no changes to the property in, in, and in the time horizon that I see. It's going to look exactly as it does now, except the lawn's going to get mowed, because the current tenant hasn't been mowing the lawn, so it looks bad.
What's the non-refundable fee? How much was that?
It, it was $410, I believe. I believe it's gone up now, so if I were to apply in the future, it would cost even more.
It's, I'm sorry, I didn't get you. What did you say?
I believe, I believe it was four, is it $410? Is that $410 in an unrefundable fee? And I believe those fees have adjusted. Is that correct? They're, so they cost more now. And so I was already in the process. The city staff had already put in, what I didn't realize at the time, but is an incredible amount of work that they put into these applications, as you can see by the packet they've put together. And since their finding was favorable, and I'd already paid the fee, I thought, well, I might as well proceed with this, and, and so that sometime in the distant future, you know, when this neighborhood is going to look different than it does now, this property will be available for that type of a use, if somebody wants to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Iverson, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Any others? I'll adjutant a motion. Okay. Oh, okay. I thought you wanted to hang me out to dry.
For the purpose of discussion, I will go ahead and move to approve an ordinance amending City of Helena Ordinance Number 3097 and the official zoning map for the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from R2 residential to R3 residential for the property legally described as lots 18 through 20 in Block 29 of the Corbin addition to the City of Helena, Lewiston Clark County, Montana.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I guess since the motion was made for purposes of discussion, I'm going to continue. So I'm, this is a difficult decision. I would say while I'm, I, I support the applicant's rationale for why, why he'd do this. I'm also very sympathetic to the residents' perspective on it, particularly as it relates to MCA that we, Mr. Alvarez went over, and the part that talks about the character of the district and its peculiar suitability for particular uses. And, and I kind of emphasize, I think Mr. Alvarez was looking at peculiar. I'm kind of looking at more the character of the district and the expressions of what the neighbors had felt here, and the potential for that changing. That potential exists in the future, obviously. We saw in the land use, or the growth policy, the future land use map has that potential. But maybe it's in the future that we take that, that decision and make that jump. And then also sympathetic to the conserving the value of buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout the jurisdictional area. So like I say, I, I think I'm, I'm going to not support this application for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. For the purpose of discussion, any others?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I would like to say this is, in fact, a difficult decision, and I'm mindful of all the comments and concerns I've heard. I appreciate redirecting us back to MCA and, and what we are required to use for our decision-making. I think the fact that this is still a residential zoning request, that, to me, will not undermine the fundamental integrity of the neighborhood, because it remains residential. I also should note, I live very close to this property. I know this area very well. I had a child who went to Jefferson, and I'm, I'm very attuned to the concerns about safety and, and walking. I don't know that this will, in, in my opinion, and based on what I've seen, I don't think this will meaningfully impact that situation. I also think, looking at the growth policy, its alignment with the growth policy, and the fact that there is no current request to do anything with the property, other than leave it as residential, I think, based on the criteria we have before us, I am inclined at this time to support the application. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Have we? It's been moved and seconded. Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, we had discussion confusing me. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
No.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
No.
The motion carries three to two.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who should address the commission?
Hi, my name's Hannah Stanton. I live at 1038 East Broadway Street. I filled out a submission, I think, last week to send to you guys. So I bought my house in 2019, and each year, you know, we get one of those really good hail rainstorms, where it's just a deluge, right? So where I live, it's just right at the bottom of Stauburn or Stayburn Street, right there on Broadway. And every single year, my property turns into a flood zone. I have images and video I could show you guys. And I've recently been working with Garden Works to try and get some, I need to redo, because I'm on that slope there, so I have a rock wall. In what originally was supposed to be maybe like a $10,000 to $15,000 project, they said if, like, we're really going to be able to handle the type- the type of water flow that I get through my property, it would be like $50,000 to $100,000. So really, I believe that this is an issue with the water, handling the water on the street there. Yeah, so I guess I don't know. I've submit, this last storm, I submit a work ticket on the MyHelena app, and I sort of got the response of, "Call us next time it happens, and we'll come help." I don't really know how you help with gallons and gallons of water coming. So I really think, like, something needs to be done there with the water diversion. I walked up a couple weeks after that and was looking up in the neighborhoods up above, and I noticed that there's, like, no drainage grates up on the next block on the street up parallel to Broadway. And, yeah, even just down on that corner, there's a couple decent-sized drains, but they still just get completely backed up and quit draining. And sometimes it's not even, like, coverage. It's just the sheer amount of water is too much. So, yeah, I don't really know what to do, so I'm hoping you guys might be able to help.
What's your name again, ma'am?
Hannah Stanton.
Hannah. OK. Manager Burton, would you look into this, please?
Mayor, yes, we can do that. Get your name and number after the meeting. That'd be great.
Yeah, and I know I've talked to the, I don't remember his name right now, maybe Shane? And he said he put in a ticket, like, with her. He let the engineers know that, you know, I'm going to make some more noise.
You just spoke to his boss, so don't worry, you know?
All right. So, OK.
OK.
Thank you.
Is there any, are there any other comments for the commission? Commissioners, any final words? This meeting is adjourned.